Thank you.
Great. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:00 PM and we'll now call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Will you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone. Let's get us started here. So is there a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Has everyone been able to review the minutes for our meeting of December 21st?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve those minutes.
And I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean and Ralph. Any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. I don't have anything under communications and correspondence this evening, so we can move to public comment. I don't see anyone in the audience this evening, and I don't see anyone in the chat.
No, not in the chat.
So I think we will move on to our monthly budget, oh, yeah, our monthly budget report. Our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, is with us this evening to give us, I believe we're halfway through our fiscal year. So Tom has the reports that have been passed out to you, and we'll go over the revenue and expenditures.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So gave you all your, the revenue and expense reports for 1231. There are some activity for December still wouldn't be posted yet, as it's only the second day of the month to get everything in, but we'll give you a, you know, a flavor of where we stand. So we're looking at the revenues. A couple of the items that we were trying to figure out and understand, and was able to get posted recently, was 00212 and 00213. And those were two revenue sources that one, they were both somewhat unanticipated. One was a municipal revenue sharing grant. That's been something they've been coming up with allocations for, for a while, and I guess this is the year they decided to distribute the funds that were in that that were, that were there held at the state. We submitted a report that manually that kind of shows how our budget changes based on some rules. You have to meet a certain threshold percentage-wise, or the percentage of inflation. And, and, and because we've stayed within those spending limits, the municipal revenue sharing monies that were allocated, they were allocated this year. And that's under the Public Act 22118. So that's a nice amount of money that came in this year. 02213 was a municipal transition grant. This one, this is related to the motor vehicle. When you're over the cap, our mill rate last fiscal year would have been over the cap. Then with this year, the revaluation, it went under the cap. But appears they've based the calculation on the prior year's mill rate. So with that, we received 23339 in the transition. This year, we're under the cap, so you would anticipate there would be little to none next year for that type of of money. So that was one that, that we got in. Going down to recording fees, the town clerk notified me that he did see, he had seen a slowing a little bit of the recording fees in November and December. And he feels that's likely due to the increase in the interest rates. His other numbers are looking, you know, within the budget area, but he, but he is seeing a slowdown in those recording fees. 0300324, which is police private duty. Those, the billing for December hasn't gone out yet, and those amounts are strong. We continually have jobs. We have terms with Mizzy, Juicy, and Rocky Mountain Fiber, depending on a few. And they anticipate a somewhat of a slowdown in the winter months. And, you know, there'll probably be a swing back up, so we'll have to, Ryan and I will have to discuss with Captain Malardo where, where he thinks it'll go with the rest of the year, and then, you know, likely in the springtime, we'll have to do a probably like, as we've done in the past, a supplemental appropriation of revenue, a supplemental appropriation of expense for what we anticipate that overage to be. Because when we get to the expense, you'll see we're already over on that line item of the expense side, but we're definitely to the positive in the revenue side. And then on the next page, 00401. As we, as I talked about the last report, investment income has been quite a bit stronger. I mean, we were doing the budget last time, I think we were in the .1s. And, you know, just depending on the bank and the time, you know, you're in between the two and a half to you know, almost approaching 4% return on like stiff. So that's positive. It's a, you know, we, we'd definitely like to see that positive swing. When the interest rates do rise, it helps us, you know, get money on our money. So that's, you'll see a positive in that account. Any questions on the revenues? All right, so we're going to go over to expenditures. The first page is where elections starts, and if you go to the second page, you know, we anticipated during the budget cycle, we talked about it, we went up a decent amount of increase in the percentage. But it's a, it's a tough one to call with, with, with the elections and how many, what the expenses will be and how many people will have. We did have a primary. We did have the November 8th elections. So we're also seeing, obviously, the minimum wage has gone up. It's hit 14, and by June it will hit 15. And therefore subsequently, the, the other numbers kind of have to go accordingly up within the registrar and within the moderators and the assistant registrars. So we see that LHS, which is the ballot, the vending machine for the voting machines, their fees were higher on this one due to the size and the number of positions on the ballot. So that was a little bit higher in the past years than we expected due to the, just the, the various size of the ballot. Election supplies were higher, and, you know, again, we're doing those two, the, the two different, you know, the primary as well as the general election in November. But, you know, what you'll see in, you see it in the revenue account with, it's, it's a, in the 00214 revenue account, there's about a $4,056 that the state gave us for the, more or less the cost of the absentee ballot and app processing as, as a, as a Help America Vote grant. So although, you know, I like to speak and tell you where the things are going higher than we thought, we do have that revenue that came in to help address some of those. So that's also a positive in that scenario. The next budget that we'll talk about is 17. 17 is the technology budget. We have had some, some positive savings as we had only hired a technology assistant director in October, which we're happy to have that individual on board. But so we've had some positive savings there in 11001. But 1302, the overtime, that is already, it's gone over budget. Those areas are generally for alarms for David to be at the various Board of Selectmen meetings and other board meetings that he has to attend, and then for other technology matters that may arise after his normal working hours. 36050 is our, it's on the next page. That's our computer maintenance, network maintenance. That's our third-party consultant. So we've had, we, we had to utilize them when there was no other employee to help out, but there was also rollouts of the body cameras that they're helping. We have to make an upgrade to one of our financial management servers. They had other issues on the cybersecurity policies that we're trying to remedy and roll out solutions. There were various computers that we had to get, that we purchased in the last fiscal year that we had to roll out to the staff and, and just various upgrades and changes in the just kind of in the way business is done in the technology where there's a lot, it seems there's a lot more licensure activities that will be coming into play. So we'll have to watch that in our next budget cycle, and David's working with the technology group to kind of come up with, you know, some numbers on that for, for the licenses. Next area was on the fire department. And the fire the fire department, the service contracts is 31,000. And that one, if you look at that, it's, it's over budget already. I think that one is, I think we're just, we're, we're under budgeted in that line item. I think that's a line item that's going to have to increase in the future. There's various items that are fire items that are there, and there are items that are building items that go in that as well, if it's, if it's directly related to the firehouse. So that would be like a, example, like an HVAC vendor. It would be the sprinkler vendors for the various firehouses. It's Norcom for the communications software and, and things of that nature. It's, I think there's some monies in there for a weather indicator so that the fire department knows how the weather's going to affect their, their coverage. So, you know, that's one of those ones, we'll, we'll have to watch that one, and I would anticipate we're going to have to increase it because the costs there are just, you know, are, are just continue to rise. 023. 023 is the police department. In the police department, as I, as we said, in the, there's the private duty line. You'll see that as 14014. And it's to this point, they've spent 185,000. That line up, so that's about 34,000 over the budget. The revenue was around 185,000, and that was out the billing in December, so that will be closer, I think, in the 200, 215 range from what I was speaking with Roseanne today. 31008 is a software licensing. That one is a line item that is under budgeted. Due to the Police Accountability Act, there was a software that was required to be purchased, that we, we purchased in fiscal year '22 to get the process started. And that's a continual license that will be paid every year, and I think even for the three-year term, it, it increased each year. And there's a, that was one of, that was approved, it's the vendor, as it was sold by the police, was, was approved by the the chiefs or the department that runs the police. So that was one of the one they had to have in place so they can have their policies and some other procedures in place. So that's one we'll have to budget for this year. So we will see a jump in that, and that's directly related to police accountability. 3402, slightly over budget at this time, and that was due to more modems when we rolled out the body cameras that were required. So that is one that will be continually to stay over the number that we have budgeted. So police accountability standards will cause, you know, it's a, it's a challenge, and then in that five-year, I think it was a five-year period, you know, we'll have to readdress the body cameras again at that point. So that's one of those ones that it'll hit you every five years. And then 032, Highway Division, that's the overtime line item is over. Pretty good in their other lines, but the overtime was, and that was one of the most, the recent storm in December was a windstorm. And that was on a holiday, which caused quite a bit of overage, which is a little bit unusual to have a, man, snow event in, in the winter. But that, that caused it, which hit a holiday, which caused I think that one of that was a $4,000 advance. I think those are the areas right now that I wanted to touch upon in the the, in, in the budget here. In the, in the, I guess there was one other area we're giving, 055, which is, is doing okay right now. That's the municipal agency eligibility, but there has been a lot of push from the senior senators, well as the, you know, individuals in the, in the public that, that, you know, utilize that service that we have with the various buses and, and the vans and the vehicles. So there is a, a good possibility that there is, is going to be an overage in the van drivers. And then obviously, if you have a lot more driving going on, there's a possibility of an overage in the gas and diesel. So I know that that's a service that Praskman Curly is working with Lynn to review and, and working through that process. But just wanted to bring that one to your attention, is that, you know, it's only 33% of the van driver stipend is, is, is left at this point. Thank you all.
Before Tom goes, does anyone have any questions for Tom on any of the revenue or expenditures? Do you want to look over for a minute while, you know, he's here?
I have a, I have just a question. I'm just curious, because obviously, we've talked everywhere about fuel and heating costs. Any sense of, I mean, it's kind of early in the winter cycle, but any sense of how we're faring with that stuff?
Um, you know, it's, it's not great, but I mean, it's certain accounts, you'll see, you've seen that, you're seeing that they're over in certain areas. Certain, certain accounts are, you know, there's changes in employees and changes in habits changing how things are allocated a little bit. So we're seeing that. You know, we're interested to see, and I know there's been some changes, Eversource had stated that they were going to have some distribution and supply charges going up, so it'll be interesting to see how that, that comes out, and you know, during this upcoming budget cycle, we'll probably try to maybe reach out to our liaison and see if they can give us any insight on, you know, what that, you know, percentage will be to help us when we, when we budget for the next round. Our supply, we're, our supply on electricity, we're locked in at a fairly strong rate. That's, that's a positive on the supply side. But you still got the delivery side, so that's a challenge. We're floating on all other fuels at this point. I think the gasoline bid, I think just recently made, might have come out, so I'll have to, we'll have to keep an eye on that. And then I think the oil, they have, they're requesting the items for the oil bid on, I think that's Kragg will send that out. I think it's around January, late January, January 20th or so. So, but right now, we're in the flow. I, last time I had reached out to our gasoline vendor, you know, should we lock, should we, you know, at the time? He said, you know, keep floating. So we've got to kind of, been working with these vendors for a while, and we try to, you know, listen to what they say. And generally, the float price has been reasonable. There's been, you know, diesel's been harder. Diesel's been painful. Because I think we were at around 350, and a lot of times we're paying 4, 470s, and you know what I mean? So that, that one's a little bit more painful than the gasoline's bid. But every, you know, we, we keep an eye on, you know, if we can see a drop, or if our vendors reach out and say, you know, this is a good time. That's, that's what I have on that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Tom while he's here? I think, I think to sum it up, I think revenue overall is, is doing very well. And expenses, we just have some areas that we want to keep an eye on.
Doing well in some areas, and expenses as well, but I always like to tell you when you want to keep your eye on.
Exactly. Well, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Right. Well, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments?
Nope.
Appointments?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on to refunds of excess payments.
Make a motion for refund of excess payment. Patricia G. Peters, $170.08.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment for Jennifer Gambacorda, $340.062.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, CCAP Auto Lease Limited, $715.73.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Source4DocumentImagingProducts LLC, $46.39.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Karen M. Reinhardt, $119.87.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, BW Credit Leasing Limited, $540.51 and $546.19.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to status reports. I just wanted to give a, a couple of updates this evening. One is, as, as Tom alluded to when we were going over the, the budget report, we did have a, a storm on December 23rd in, in Portland. I think overall, I think the town's response was excellent. Public Works was out. It was a windstorm that, that kind of turned into an ice event with, you know, some freezing and severe drops in temperature. And we did have several downed trees in town. Even at Town Hall, we had, we had a tree that was down. And, and so Eversource did have, as they do with these major storms, they had a liaison that they appoint to the town of Portland. And that liaison, and myself, and, and our Public Works Director, Ryan O'Halpin, we, we stayed in, in routine contact with one another throughout the event, as we did have a number of power outages. I think around 300 customers were out at the, at the max. And normally, that's not really that big of a deal, but when you're dealing with those temperatures that we were dealing with, it can be troublesome for people. So I, I do want to just thank the Portland CERT team, because on Christmas Eve, they, they organized with, with just a really, not very much notice at all. And we opened up the warming center at the high school. And although no one did show up, we, we were there. And so we were there for, for four hours for residents in case they needed water or, you know, electricity or to, you know, charge their phone. So I just want to, want to thank every CERT member, also our, our fire department. Bob Shea was there as well. And there were members of the fire department there. So certainly, I want to thank them all for giving, you know, their time generously on, on a holiday at a moment's notice. So I want to thank them for that. And I think the last people to get power back got power around 2:00 on Christmas Day. So it was a, it was a time-consuming event, but, but thankfully, everyone did get power back on Christmas. As far as other projects go in town, just to give you guys some brief updates, GZA continues to do their preliminary work on the water. Rich DeRozier was sending some correspondents back and forth today, asking, so, trying to get more information on a number of different town properties in town, as well as some existing well information. So they're getting close to presenting the town with some areas that they would like to test, have some test wells. But they're not there yet. They're still doing that preliminary work, but they are, they are working on that every day. So that's great to see. The Brownstone Avenue project continues to move along. If you've noticed, if you drive by, that pile is, is gone. And the, the clean fill will be coming in. So we continue to work with Tye and Bond and ECR on that project as well. And we are waiting more details on our steep grant on our sidewalks. We're waiting on that contract. But our town engineer, Jacobson and Associates, are, are doing some work, or will be doing some work on that to get those sidewalks in, because we want to get going on that as, as quickly as possible. Any projects that, that are missing that anybody would like to know about? Well...
Russell Ave?
Russell Avenue is out to bid. The engineering is out to bid for both the Russell Avenue and the Co. Avenue projects. As far as, as far as an update, as far as fixed assessment agreement, as far as the
Kind of the whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yeah, anything.
So the latest with, with the Brainerd Place Um, so the latest with, with the Brainerd Place development is they're going back, they're, um, seeking a, another, uh, site plan modification for the drive-through of the Starbucks building per Starbucks request. So that's something that, that has to go through, um, planning and zoning. And, uh, I do know that the plans for the first building, the, uh, the apartment building, Building E, is with the ICC for review. That's, uh, Sean, do you know the abbreviation for that?
Uh, I know what it is.
You know what it is?
Yeah.
But that's who does the, uh, the, the review of the plans. Tom, you know, what's this?
Yes.
International Commercial Code. So they're reviewing the plans for Building E. So once they review that, then they'll be able to, uh, move forward with that. Uh, as far as the fixed assessment agreement goes, I had a conversation with Dan Bertram, uh, just before Christmas, and he has promised to get us something to review by the end of this month. So I hope to have that by the end of January so we can have a, uh, a meeting, an executive session with our town attorney to go over that and, uh, and then, you know, make any modifications necessary. Um, but that's pretty much it for, that's pretty much all I have for now. They, they continue to work. You, if you drive by, you see them there. Um, so yeah. Anything else?
The solar project?
The solar project at, um, the transfer station?
Yes.
Uh, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow at three PM on that. So the RFP went out. Uh, if any selectmen would like to attend that, it's a virtual meeting. If you want to hop on mic, I can send you the, uh-
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so, yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't become a meeting though.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm busy.
I want to make-
You can go for me there.
We can have, we can have-
I'm gonna be moving my daughter into her apartment tomorrow, but if I'm available, jump on, I will.
Okay, but if we can have three, we just can't have four, right?
That's three.
Yeah, you can't.
Okay, so you are. I'll be in the meeting.
Okay. So anyways, the, uh, I believe it went out to bid. I think we got five, we got five bids for the project. So we're gonna go over that tomorrow. That's really the only information I have at the moment on that. But, uh, but that meeting is scheduled for three PM tomorrow. Good question though. I should have mentioned that.
The package for the Brownstone bidding, the RFP?
Package for the Brownstone.
You want to go with the new RFP? Do you have a timeframe for when you want to get that out?
Early in the new year, but I haven't had a timeframe yet, no. But yes, we're, we'll be doing an RFP again. Um, but, uh, probably, I'm thinking by, uh, early spring, the latest, like probably, I'd like, ideally like to get it out by March. But again, I, I would, I want to talk with Ty and Bond too, see what their recommendations are. Uh, really, you know, want to make sure that we, uh, do everything correct when it comes to this one. And that's all I have. So what do you got, Ralph?
Amazingly, I don't have anything because the last meeting I had all my updates. So I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Anyone have any other status updates?
I don't think you said that. Water main break today.
We did have a water main break today. It was, it was a, an existing break that, that was known about, but they did have to shut, uh, some valve, valves off on Main Street. So there was a brief outage for, for some residents, but, uh, Public Works, uh, worked pretty quickly and, uh, they got that break fixed. So, um, yeah.
It was a service leak, uh, Brian?
Yeah.
What was the name?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to give kudos.
And half the valves didn't work.
Yeah. I would give kudos to the fire department too. I was following the issue the other night with a fire on Upper Cobble Hill. And we had our guys on mutual assist and we had to call them back in. It sounds like, that was a crazy show, but it sounds like the guys did a bang-up job on that house and-
Very good stuff.
Yeah.
Very good.
So kudos to those guys.
Thank you, John, for mentioning that. That was, uh, yeah. Were you there, Sean?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, we've had a lot of, uh, a lot of fires lately. So it's, uh, hopefully that's the end of that for a long time. Uh, okay. So with that, we can move on to public comment. I don't see anything in the chat or in the audience. So we'll move on to Board of Selectmen general informal discussion. Does anyone have anything they would like to talk about? I'll look this way, uh, to start this evening.
Nothing tonight.
I guess that's every, no. What do you got, Bobby?
I just got two things. Uh, one, I wanted to, since we're coming up into budget season, and we haven't had a hurricane or a severe storm here in years, that we need to look more about budgeting for taking down, you know, older trees and damaged trees, especially, um, east of seventeen. Cause it wasn't really a bad windstorm for, you know, on the twenty-third, and a lot of people lost power. So I wanted to look into, you know, raising our budget for tree work in the town.
But were they town trees that took the wires down or were they trees on individuals' property?
Well, I think a lot of them were close to the road like out of, which is within that setback off the middle of the street. But I know there's some Michael Edmarked last year after a couple of storms. They still see ribbons on and up on Penfield Hill. So I don't know. Do we still even have a, a tree warden in town?
Technically, I think it's the Public Works Director.
Cause we used to have one that years ago would-
Wasn't Don, years ago, wasn't it Don Kelsey?
It was him for a while. It was Harry Hetrick. It was our Johnson for a while.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, I think Bobby's right. There's-
I, I just want to be proactive for it at once. Instead of, we wait for the storm to come and then we're apologizing to residents and we're spending days cleaning stuff up. If some of it, we can take care of at our leisure and at our expense instead of paying overtime and, and stuff like that to clean it up.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Who, Bobby, you in the committee or?
And now from, you know, from what you said, Sean, I'd be curious how many out there are sitting there pre-tagged already. They've already been designated for removal. How many we have out there?
Uh, Tom, do you have something to add?
I was just gonna say, like, one of the things that we need to do is look to see if there's, uh, pieces of the year on power lines. Is EverSource able to take those?
That is true.
I'm, I'm thinking of everything on the other side of the street. I mean, cause EverSource is pretty adamant about coming through town every year and doing tree work. But the other side of the street is the town's responsibility.
So you're thinking of trees that may fall?
Right. Yeah. Whether it's taking out a power line or it's blocking the road.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
No, that's something that's always on our budget. We do have a tree clearing line item and, and that's something that we can, you know, look to possibly fund more now. And, uh, so it's one of those things I remember. We used, we used to have a, a tree subcommittee on the Board of Selectmen. We could, could look to revisit that if you-
Bobby wants to be chairman of that.
It was, it was always funny because, uh, part of the committee would look for places to plant trees and then the other duty was looking for where, which trees to take down. So you're always kind of creating more work for yourself with it, but-
I'm all for taking them down.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I had was when we talked at the last meeting and we were going over the committees and stuff like that. And it was that committee that had no members on it. That was the one that's supposed to oversee town projects.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Isn't that kind of what we do here every other Tuesday?
Well, that's why we don't have anybody on that.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we, yeah, I mean, I think it's just a different-
Did we eliminate it?
You, you can. I mean, honestly, it can just kind of, you could, you could eliminate it. Um, it doesn't, right now, there's no, I don't know. I don't see a need to eliminate it because we don't have anyone on it and it's not, you know, if you-
But isn't that the reason to eliminate it?
I know. Okay. I mean, yeah, if it's-
It's, it's been around for almost a year and a half. There hasn't been a member on it. And I don't see a need for it.
Mm-hmm.
Because we discuss every town project here whenever we have a meeting.
Well, I think the thought, and we talked about it the last meeting, one of the thoughts and I know Ralph, you were here when that was created.
I, I meant to go back and look at, we had this conversation with the holidays, they totally spaced. I, I need to just probably go back and just look at what the intention was and, and get more. So I can at least remember. I, I just can't remember.
Well, I remember, from what I understand, we talked about several different projects combining that they would, they would look at. And the projects were the, uh, the Brownstone Avenue project, uh, and the riverfront, the river, uh, the park project that where we're trying to put in, um, that pathway to the river.
Right.
And so instead of using that, uh, committee, what we did was we created a river access committee instead. So that was the thought process. Instead of having, you know, I, I was thinking we should have more targeted committees rather than a very broad committee that looks at a lot of things. Um, so that's why we didn't actually put people there. But, I mean, that was, that was the thought process. But, you know, we can always revisit that. It exists if you want to, if you want to close it. I, I guess I just don't, you know, whether it exists or doesn't.
The point of it because it's a committee overseeing committees.
Yeah, but right now it just, it's just words on a paper. It's, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not something that, I don't, I don't think it's a pressing, you know what I mean?
No, it's not a pressing issue. I just think it, that it's a, it's a waste to have or was a waste to ever create it.
Well, I didn't create it, Bobby. I don't know what you-
And I'm glad you didn't.
I, I love it. When the discussion we had, it seemed to make good sense. But you're right. Right at, right after, we then formed a committee that was specific to the river, the river-
Access. Right.
So it sounds to me like it was, there was probably some thought to, the two riverfronts had some commonality and maybe that committee could, could cover, oversee both of them. But you're right, they've created a separate committee for it. So, I don't know.
It, it, it makes more sense to me to have a, a committee for each project, each park, whatever's going on. Cause that's their main topic and that's what they stick to.
Yeah, let me just find out. Let me try to refresh my memory.
Mike, do you remember any of that? I know you weren't here last meeting. I don't know if you-
I remember like when we made a committee up with under Susan's watch. I, I, I'm with Ralph on this one. Like I gotta remember why we were thinking it was a good idea.
Made sense at the time, but then we did these other things. So I don't know if that was needed.
What's that?
What's the name of that?
With the projects.
I can't remember what it was titled.
Come on, Bobby. You can't even bring it up.
Come on. You gotta have it written down, Bobby.
You're right. The intent was to wrap all the projects into one little bundle and have someone oversee them. But I just don't, it never came to fruition. I think it was right at the end of our-
It was in October.
Right, before the new, uh, new regime came on board.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure the thought was when you've got two on the river and you have species that they're investigating, you got Army Corps of Engineer requirements. If you didn't have two committees, those things would overlap and you could deal with everything from both projects. But if they created another committee.
What was the name of it, Ralph?
The Town Projects Review Committee.
Do we know if it was supposed to be members of this board or just general public members?
I don't think so. I don't think it's a subcommittee.
No, it wasn't a subcommittee. It was intended to be other individuals. Cause I reckon we talked about people being on it. There are two of the people that are on the riverfront access committee. So-
Well, that's kind of, and that's where we, we kind of went with that.
That almost seems like one of those committees where you take the chairperson from all the other committees and have them sit down together and that's what it would be.
Tell each other what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. I mean, there is a benefit and I, I've seen in other stuff I've done. It's very easy to have multiple committees going their own separate ways, but it's good to have those, that, that crossover periodically. So you all are speaking to one another and you're not recreating the wheel seventeen times.
Yeah.
And that could be the thought behind it. Again, I appreciate it. Maybe if you guys could pull up the notes from that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll track down those.
And if it, if the creation of other committee on its freestanding negated a need for it, then we can just talk about it next meeting about jettisoning the thing, you know?
Anything else, Bobby?
No, I said-
Okay, good.
Cause you're bad.
I said I had two-
How about you, Sean?
Good today.
I, I do have one more thing that I, I wanted to, uh, bring up with you all is, uh, now that we are meeting at seven PM instead of seven thirty PM.
Yeah.
One of the things that that could potentially affect is our budget workshops. So in the past, we always typically have begun our budget workshops at seven PM. Now, sometimes on Wednesdays, when we have a Board of Selectmen meeting, what we would do is we would begin a budget workshop meeting at seven PM and then we would, um, then we would pause that and have our Board of Selectmen meeting and then reconvene the budget workshop. So I don't know, and I wanted to ask the board if you would like to start budget workshops at six thirty as opposed to seven PM. Is that, is that a conflict?
Why wouldn't we just do it after the meeting?
Or we could do it after the meeting. We could do the whole budget workshop after the meeting.
Well, it just doesn't make sense to me to talk for a half hour, then have a Board of Selectmen meeting and then pick up what we were talking about before the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can.
At least you can lay it out.
Especially in the beginning when there's really not a lot. Like in the first, the first meeting.
Tom just said you can get a lot accomplished in a half an hour, just so in case it didn't get picked up on the microphone. So I, it's a thought. I don't know if-
It looks like you have one conflict. So the problem is, is if we switch the time of that, you keep the time, you know, that, you know.
Or we, or we start at seven like we did.
Well, it would be two on Wednesday.
Oh, you're right.
Last year and then-
It'd be the one.
No, that would just be the one.
Just the one.
Just the one.
I'd say you just keep it at seven. If it's just at one.
And then break at the seventh or whatever.
What would you have to start at seven?
Uh, the Board of Selectmen meeting, then go to-
To budget.
I, I think it might be hard for me to get here, but anyway, like six thirty.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's just me, but-
Either way, we're gonna go on these days longer than we normally would because-
We'll have a regular meeting and then we'll have a, uh-
Right.
Budget workshop.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to see what, what the consensus was. I'm fine with, with, you know, either way. But, um, but I, I do recognize seven, we're already, starting at seven could potentially cause some issues for, for some, for some of the selectmen. So why don't we, we'll have the regular meeting at seven PM. Uh, once we end that, we will then start the, our first budget workshop on Wednesday, March fifteenth.
Perfect.
And the first selectman does control the agenda to a certain extent. So, yeah, and some of those nights you just make sure that the, the meeting agenda is a manageable one.
It's a late agenda on the fifteenth.
The only issue, the only issue I can think of is, is we don't, by doing that, we don't technically have a start time for the budget workshop. So maybe we would start the budget workshop at, um, six fifty-nine, you know, and then-
And recess?
And then recess.
Recess and then go into this.
Yeah.
Cause then that gives you a start time.
Yeah, then that gives us a start time. So I'll figure that, I'll figure out the details of that, but, but we'll, uh, we'll move forward with seven PM is when we'll get to work.
Which is all you need.
Okay. Anything else for general informal discussion?
Apparently not. I think we, alright, discussed everything in reports.
I have nothing on follow-up items. Uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one thing. We talked about reviewing the town charter.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to maybe put a calendar on, uh, when we're gonna have a discussion of what we would like, there's certain things we would like actually reviewed in that. And a timeframe when we have it filled, the, uh, the town charter revision committee filled. And I'd like a timeline on when they come back with what we're looking for. So it doesn't continue to drag on and drag on. I'd like this to be done, um, in months and not years, like in the past.
Well, the charter review, do you have, um, I mean, that's something that we can, we can certainly do. We can, typically you would make a, a committee, like a charter committee and, um, and you would charge them with, with looking at the charter and, and finding things and suggestions for, for changes and then bringing that-
But I think there's, there's things in there that we know that we've seen evolve over the time that need to be addressed. And I think we should come up with our recommendations of some things we'd like to see and then have them review the charter. But I don't think this is something that needs to go on forever.
Mm-hmm.
That's my opinion.
We can-
I'd like to have a, a timeframe on it.
Okay. Okay. We can do that, I mean, we can have a charter review committee if, if that's something that the selectmen would like to, to look at. I have no, no issues.
I just have one question because I can't recall off the top of my head on the approval of the charter. The town votes on it and is there a certain percent, like does that, there's a certain percentage on that, right? So that comes into play where you gotta kind of revolve and work around elections to try to get enough people that are gonna show up.
Usually, I think in the past, it's been done on it at an election, like you voted on it if I remember correctly.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, you could have charter changes at, at a referendum question on a ballot. You can, you can certainly do that and typically, I mean, it would be up to, you know, the, the committee and then this board.
Because I, whatever, I'm sure, I, I'm trying to find it, but I don't know what, like Ralph said, what the percentage we need to change that.
Well, it's in the charter.
I know, I'm going through the charter line by line. So I won't, when I get to that, we'll figure out how we have to do this, but whether it has to go through referendums, we get another number of votes or can we just do a, a vote at a public hearing?
No, you can't do a vote at a public hearing.
So you answered it?
Yeah.
So you answered the question?
No, a charter, anytime you change the charter, that's, that's, it's a, it's a process. It's not, it's not just...
So that's why I'm asking and you didn't, you didn't answer the question that was right there.
If I, if I didn't answer it clearly, it would have to go to referendum. You would have to, you have to vote on it. And I think what, what Ralph was saying is that you may need a certain amount of voters present and voting in order for that, for that referendum to, to count.
Yeah, and if you were to do it separate, now you're incurring additional... You do it with an election because you're already...
You attach it to an election.
We attach it to an election, that's what I'm getting at.
I mean...
Not having it's out there for two, two and a half years and getting forgotten. And then all of a sudden, we bring it up and goes to election. It's something I think that's important that needs to be done. There's some things in there that I think everybody agrees that there's a few things in there that need to be changed or at least looked at that I would like to see them get changed.
Well, just, I, I'm looking at the charter now and just, it, it starts at section 101 and ends at section 1,413. So it's, it's, it's a big task.
Right, there are, that's... Go back and look at the previous charter revision committees and how, how, what they went through and then what they presented and how much just got a black X through it and wasn't even presented, you know, to be changed. I mean, there's some things in there that I don't think really need to be looked at or changed, but I think there's some things that the way we govern need to be changed and where we sit today in 2023.
Yeah, I mean, that's, if that's the consensus of the board, then yeah, I, I think we can, we can certainly do that. I mean, do you have a timeframe in mind, Sean, is what, what you want to see as far as? You know, I, I mean, in order to, to do what you're talking about, it's a, it's a, it's a very lengthy...
No, I understand that, but I don't want to see us in Ju, in April saying, oh, we gotta get a committee together.
Well, I, I mean, I'll be honest, it was not on my radar for, for April, I mean...
Well, we, I mean, we discussed this, it went by, went by, went by, and then I think about a month ago, this brought up myself and I think Bobby or several others said that we think we should look into this, so.
Last time it was amended, it was in 2004.
Yeah, but there was a committee in 2008 as well that, that did review the charter and did, you know? But...
Is there a, is there a stipulation of how often it has to be reviewed?
Uh, the suggestion is they, they like you to review the charter every 10 years, but it's not, as far as I know, it's not mandatory. There's no, there's no rule that says you have to, but...
It's just a suggestion.
It's, it's, I mean, it's good practice. I mean, things change. It's a, it's a document that has certain thresholds for dollar amounts that, that change over time. So, so I mean, it's always, it's good to look at it. You know, I, I do think we, we have a lot on our plate coming up. That's the only, that's my only hesitation is that.
The way I understand, we can't just go, one of the things is that dollar threshold, which we've talked about, is I think needs to be looked into. So it's not something that we can just go, okay, we need to look at something in the charter to change with the changing times, the way I'm looking at the way it has to be revised. So we have to go through this whole charter revision committee and look at the whole charter. And that's why I'm saying there's some things in there that we kind of get stuck behind the eight ball because they, it doesn't get looked at every 10 years or times are changing faster than we're changing. So.
I know we have a lot on our plate.
Yeah, that's, but, but no, it is important to review the charter. That's, which is why it's on, it's why it's a follow-up item. And so, so yeah, if, if, if we want to put a, a charter review committee together, I think that's a, you know, it's a good idea. Anytime you look at the charter, there's, you always gotta be careful because, you know, obviously, there's things that, that can't, that I would say it's time to change some things and, but when you, you have to go out to referendum and have each one. And so voters tend to like some change, but not too much change and, you know, trying to find that balance. It's a, it's a tough job of the chart, of any committee to, to find things that, that there's consensus on to change. So, which is why it's, it's just delicate, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a delicate committee.
Oh, I understand.
So we gotta, if we're gonna do that, then I, I would say let's, let's have more serious conversations about, about forming a committee and, and thinking about what, what are some things that you'd like to see in a change and then certainly the formation of a committee who would, who would be on the committee as well. So that's something that, you know, I would say let's, let's carry forward with this at, you know, at a future meeting.
Can you put your hands, Ryan, on some of the notes from the establishment of the previous review committees for our next meeting, just to see?
What they were talking about.
How they went about it, how many members were on them?
Yeah, it has an old...
So all the members are in the, in the book, but, and, and many of the members are, you know, around, you know, I know, I think Terry Larson had been on just about every charter review committee. She's probably the, the best person, you know, to speak with about that. But, but yeah, no, I can get some, some notes. I know the clerk's office has a lot of that information, so.
All right. Other than that, if you still want somebody to make the motion, I'll do that. When you're done writing.
Unless someone else has anything else.
I guess I second the motion if you're gonna take it.
I'm gonna say.
I take a motion, we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone, the time is 7:55.